Recording in progress.
Welcome, everyone. I now call the September 13th, 2022 regular City Council meeting to order. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. The City of Bothell is now providing the option of attending council meetings remotely or in person. Public comment will be allowed both in writing or verbally. Verbal comments may be taken either in person or remotely. Sign-up sheets were provided online by the City Clerk's office via link from the agenda. A call-in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone to listen live to the meeting. If you have called in, we ask that you mute your device so as not to interfere with the meeting. If a participant fails to mute their connection and causes a disruption to the meeting, the connection will be terminated. At this point, we will take a moment to take roll call of the council members by position number. Please say "here" when the city clerk calls your name. City clerk?
Councilmember Zornz?
Here.
Mayor Thompson?
Here.
Councilmember Alderks? Councilmember McNeil?
Here.
Councilmember Manke? Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Here.
All present with the exceptions of Councilmembers Manke and Alderks, who are absent and excused.
Thank you, city clerk. Next, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. For all remote meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently. State your name each time before speaking. Mute your microphone when not speaking. For council attending remotely, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom when you wish to speak, and I will call on you. Speak clearly and pause frequently, and remember to mute your mic when not speaking. The first item on the agenda is meeting agenda approval, and I would like to pull Agenda Bill 22124, the Legislative Agenda and Policy Manual, so the entire council is present to receive the information and provide feedback. We've worked through this. It's going to get rescheduled to October 4th with planned adoption of November 1st. Are there any other changes to tonight's agenda? Perfect. Show of hands. Who's cool with that? All right, I see four hands. All right, next up, we have presentations, reports, and briefings, public engagement opportunities. September is Puget Sound Starts Here Month. You can take the Puget Sound Starts Here online pledge and learn simple ways you can help protect local waterways. You can learn more at bothellwa.gov/PSSH. What Goes Where Workshop is September 25th, 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. You can stop by the Recology Store to learn how to recycle right and get answers to your recycling, compost, and garbage questions. You can learn more at bothellwa.gov/RecologyStore. And youth ride transit free. Beginning on September 1st, riders 18 and younger can ride for free on transit systems across Washington, including community transit, King County Metro, and sound transit. You can go to info.myorca.com/youth-ride-free to learn more. Next up, we have a couple of different staff briefings. City Manager Standard, I'm going to turn it over to you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. And our first briefing this evening is some good news and some opportunity to share some lessons learned. So Blaine Land, our Recreation and Community Events Coordinator, will be joining us for a staff report on feedback and, again, lessons learned from Summer Nights, the 2022 spectacular. Take it away, Blaine.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. I am going to share my screen to provide the presentation today. There were many lessons learned and great opportunities. So here we go. Just one second. All right. So without any great presentations, there's going to be tons of beautiful photos so that you guys can see the amazing successes from the Summer Nights in Bothell. I do want to thank the council for providing the initiative of hosting or having the Parks Department lead the way of spearheading the vision of Summer Nights in Bothell. It was an amazing opportunity to be a part of, the core elements being music, art, and community. And we're going to highlight that through the presentation today, just to show the community that is on the call today, and also counsel of things that we learned and thought were successes and opportunities for 2023. So I apologize if there's a little bit of lag between the slides, but we'll get there. I wanted to just capture the six weeks of events in downtown Bothell. If this doesn't show you how vibrant our community is, I don't know else we could. Thank you to the community members out there that took photos of the event. But this just captures the beauty of Summer Nights in Bothell and downtown Bothell. We had things at the City Hall Plaza and Main Street kind of going back and forth between music, art, and culture. It was a very vibrant six weeks on Fridays. So the core elements that we all decided on as the initiative this year was Music Nights. Music was to bring in blending in the tradition formerly known as musics out in the field or concerts in the summer. We wanted to carry on that tradition, but in a different platform and different stage. And as you can see on this slide, it was well-received. You might not be able to see it. We had food trucks. We had areas for outdoor games. It was a beautiful setting. And then also, I want to highlight the businesses really enjoyed that after these events, that the attendees would go and enjoy a Friday night in downtown Bothell. Another great series within the components of the event was Immersive Art Nights. And the initiative behind this was to integrate more art culture into our platforms of events and programming. And this was an awesome opportunity to partner with the Bothell Arts Commission. So I'd like to highlight that the Bothell Arts Commission did spearhead a great effort in seeking vendors. And so we had a wide variety of vendors seeking on those nights. And then the largest of it all was the cultural celebrations. It was beautiful. We co-hosted with Central Cultural Mexicano and Utsav Youth Group. And for those who got to attend, they were a beautiful vibrancy of our community that we got to host on the City Hall Plaza. And so with all of those elements, we wanted to take away the idea of what was the key objectives and what did we succeed in. And as we all know, I joined the community or this team in March. And the idea was, how can we create something new but stay true to Bothell and diversify our audience and host things that brought in, you know, vendors from beyond just Bothell but stay true to downtown Bothell? So these were the 10 things that we felt were key successes and the objectives that were originally set forth with us. Number one was community engagement. After the pandemic, it had been quite some time that we had some events. So it was amazing to host an array of events for six weeks. So community engagement was there. Stakeholder development was something that was key to the success of these events. We worked with so many stakeholders, whether it be the Bothell Chamber of Commerce or even the cultural organizations. It's important to be able to grow those stakeholder development and partnerships throughout the years to come. And then, of course, one of the key elements was to activate downtown, not only host events there, but spotlight downtown, activate our businesses, and that was well-received. And diversity in our attendance. You know, we did music, art, and cultural nights, and that was to see who is the heart of Bothell, who is coming out to our events. And if you got to attend any of the event series, you would see that it was very diverse and who is in attendance. And I'll highlight that in the next slide. And then local business support. It was amazing to see the Main Street businesses so supportive of this event series. I was able to go with some of our colleagues in the Parks and Rec Department and walk down Main Street and just ask if they're okay with promoting it. And they were very excited to have things down Main Street. And I will throw out the kudos to the Beaster Lights. They did love that as well. Also showcasing local artists. It is something on the initiative for the Bothell Arts Commission to who are our local artists and how are they engaged with our community. You have a beautiful gallery here at the City Hall. And to add to that, how can we have local artists come out to not pop-up events but stakeholder events that we hosted this summer? And performance quality was a key thing. So I had was noted that for those who got to attend our first Music Night, harmonious funk is well-known in our community, and we wanted high-level performances. And those who got to attend our Art Nights got to see that it was local artists performing. So performance quality was spectacular. And then vendor engagement. Something to keep in mind for next year is we now have a vendor profile of an Excel spreadsheet, over 100 vendors out there that we reached out to create that community engagement. And then the last two, the social media presence was great. I'm going to highlight those stats on the next slide. And then food truck permitting. What a fun endeavor, right? Getting to work with the fire department. I sincerely appreciate those in the fire department that assisted us with the food truck permitting. We did have food trucks almost at every single event, and it was a great process to learn. So those are some of the key objectives and things that we thought were very successful in hosting these events. The next slide is just kind of some fun stats. We wanted to highlight the average attendance. So on the top of the screen, you'll be able to see that roughly we had about 1,000 people. And I'm taking that average between two events for the Music Nights and then about 1,500 for the Art Nights and 2,000 for the cultural celebrations. And the audience base included youth, and it could include adults or couples or friends or visitors. It was wide variety. And again, we want to acknowledge those community partnerships. Without the community partnerships, we wouldn't have been able to host and lift these type of events. And then direct marketing, website, email, social media, print publication, event signage. There's always things to learn for next year and enhance and refine. But those were our key strategies for communicating to the general public of what we were going to host this year. And then the last data that you'll see is, I just thought was interesting. We wanted to see how our engagement going full force into event series from 4th of July into the Summer Nights, what attraction would be from a social presence. And that carries on for all the events to come, right? And so you can just see a fun stat. So we gained quite the followers for the community social presence. And so with every success, there's always areas of opportunities. And then the post-event debrief, we just wanted to highlight here some five measurable event post-debriefs that we will still continue to discuss. So number one is the location and venue. We activated downtown. It was absolutely amazing. We still would like to have this Summer Nights in downtown Bothell. But let's consider factors that we, as the event coordinators, have to handle: access to power, restrooms, rentals, barricades, all those components that add that additional staffing. How can we refine and enhance those elements and be just more effective in how we're orchestrating those events? So I'd like to discuss the alternative locations that provide a natural outdoor space. So cement is a beautiful platform to put in anything and everything, right? Here at the City Hall Plaza, we are very, it is, you know, pavement, and we added in those features to create that inviting atmosphere. I'd still like to consider having these events in Summer Nights in downtown Bothell. But what are some local accessible areas that have natural outdoor seating per se, whether that be grass or the amphitheater, so on and so forth? Those are things we're just considering within the post-debrief. And then utilizing the parks, of course. We are Parks and Recreation highlighting what is an accessible park in downtown Bothell. I think in all of our minds, we think of Pabell. Park at Bothell Landing is a beautiful feature that we have. But how do these events marry in with that? Or do we like the platform that we had? The other area that we would like to consider in the debriefing is staffing and volunteering. I'm going to work with my counterpart Shelby into developing a volunteer program for these event series. It is a heavy lift, but it's a beautiful lift in itself. It's well-received in our community. We just want to strategize a little bit better with volunteer program. Along with the idea of the location, one of the things that we came into traffic control, you know, barricading down 101st and Main, it usually took about four to five vehicles, right? So just considering those elements when we're thinking of 2023. So the idea of post-event debrief, I never like saying it's something we're going to change. I think it's enhancing and refinement. That's two great words to utilize. So the big goal for us is just to talk about what were the key elements that we loved and were successful, and how do we keep them strong and manageable for future years? So for us, we felt like the performances were great, the partnerships were great, vendors, the timeframe, the ambiance, and the variety. And so from there, those are the template to move forward with. And the last two areas that we thought were opportunities is sponsorship engagement. Having that it was such a quick turnaround, we didn't get to dive deep into sponsorship engagement. And I think that now that our community sees what we can do, there's going to be a huge want and involvement. So that is going to be a big part of our role to develop a robust sponsorship package. And then measurables and deliverables. I'm a person of measurables and deliverables. How do we deem success? Whether that we're saying, yes, it was amazing, or what are just some key factors that we're successful in a measurable stance? So working with you guys or working with our department to figure out those measurables that we can provide for next year. So in summary, that is Summer Nights in Bothell. It was absolutely amazing. We think it's a great success, and we look forward to bringing it back in 2023 with those considerations. So I will open it up for questions and comments.
Councilmember Zornz?
I'll just get it out first. Blaine, you did a fabulous job. And I got to go to five of the six nights. Every time I was in town, I made sure that I, that we were there. A lot of my family came. And we just thoroughly, thoroughly enjoyed it. And I know the next day, you were probably completely toast. But you and staff just did an incredible job. It was just, I think it's going to get us through the winter. So thank you for, you know, all the thought and skill that you put into that. And I am assuming, you know, all the pieces of music, art, and cultural celebration, those pieces are going to be reworked and embellished for next summer. Is there any opportunity to put in some performing arts, like Shakespeare in the Park?
I always think there's opportunity for growth within that, yeah. Just seeing what we were able to accomplish with that, even adding it to the Art Nights is definitely doable.
There's a couple of Shakespeare groups in Seattle. Wooden O is one, and I forget the name of the other one, but they're top drawer and draw huge crowds. So I would enjoy seeing that as well. But thank you. I'm not going to put any other burdens on you except to say this was great, and I'm looking forward to what comes up for summer of 2023.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just echo the comments and how important this was for our community. Super excited to kick it off this year and see where we can go in the future. I'm also happy to hear that we're looking at the resources that it takes to put these on, ensuring that we're not overloading staff, make sure that we have the volunteerism, and also the fact that you're looking at other areas within our community to do this, not just here on the plaza, but looking at, you know, maybe the amphitheater or other parks within our community so that we can get a broader reach out in the community so we can get folks coming from all parts of our community. So I'm super excited to see where it goes. This is just the start. But amazing work that you and everybody did on this to kick this off this year on short, short, short notice. So thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Do you want to go?
I was going to say, thank you again for doing this, and thank you, everybody here, for doing, you know, I know Police Department had presence, Fire Department had presence, you know, all staff parks. It was amazing, amazing experience. I was here for most of them, not all of them, because I was out of town for a little bit, taking advantage of that recess. But, yeah, so no, it was great. Thank you so much for doing this and looking forward to building upon what we started this year.
Thank you.
I just want to say that when you take a new job in a new city, all the way across the country, and come in, and your job is being responsible for something that council deeply cared about, like, that's a lot of pressure, and you totally came through. And I really appreciate it. I appreciate all the work you did and the hustle you had. And I really enjoyed attending, just going and hanging out with my family. It was a lot of fun. It was really cool just having people in town. And so, again, thank you. Also, Nick, thank you and your whole team, because I know you guys probably stayed late, striking down, and then had work to do the next morning as well. And I think this sort of is a proof of concept before we go through the budget process to figure out kind of what we need to do to make something like this more sustainable and/or bigger. I'm looking forward to having that conversation. One last thing I want to say is, I got feedback from a few of the folks that were organizing it, and every single person went out of their way to compliment you to me. Like, every single person, like, I did not go around being like, hey, what did you think about Blaine? But everybody was like, Blaine is amazing. So just thank you. Like, the feedback I got was amazing. It made me super proud. And I'm really looking forward to what this looks like next year.
Well, thank you. I mean, I can't say thank you enough. I sincerely appreciate that. And I owe it to echoing that our team, you know, the Parks and Recreation Team, fire, police, almost every single department had a hand in this event. So it was absolutely amazing. But I'll gladly work to see what we can do for next year in refinement and have that come back to Bothell. So thank you so much.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Our next staff report, I'll welcome Scott Emmerich to the podium. And Scott's going to be providing an update on the downtown cleanup. Just as a reminder, on my weekly message to council, there is an attachment to that Scott will speak to. So if you need something in front of you, you can pull that up. But otherwise, Scott will bring up the presentation and lead us through.
Thank you, Kyle. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and City Council members. So I'd like to do a staff update on the downtown cleanup sites. I'm going to be focusing on the Ultra and Lot P South sites. The reason why I'm presenting right now is that the Ultra Cleanup Action Plan is going to go to public comment period pretty soon, end of the month. And so what I'll be talking about tonight is briefly the Ultra and the Lot P South site in relation to the other downtown cleanup sites, a little bit of history on the Ultra site, the proposed remedy and impacts to the community for the Ultra site, and the overall next steps for the Ultra site throughout the cleanup process. And then I'll give a quick update on the Lot P South site. So this figure shows the downtown cleanup sites. I think, yeah, the cursor shows, you know, we're relationship to City Hall here, Bothell Way, SR 522. The Lot P South site is in the northwest corner or northwest of the downtown area. And the Ultra site, Ultra site is over here, just, you know, just southwest of the City Hall. It starts, and then the plume stretches down to almost south to SR 522. So a little history on the Ultra site. It is basically historical dry cleaning operations there. Three dry cleaners from the 50s to the late 60s, rain check cleaners, new life cleaners, and then Ultra Custom Care cleaners. But we use Ultra for short for them and for the whole site itself. All three of them use perchloroethylene or PERC solvent, dry cleaning solvent. And that's a chlorinated hydrocarbon hazardous waste. And so from the last 20 years, 2001 to 2020, there's been multiple investigations and interim actions performed for the city as part of the downtown redevelopment, and then also performed by the property owners to assess extent of contamination. In 2012, the city acquired the property as part of downtown redevelopment. And then in the last couple of years, we completed the remedial investigation feasibility study and draft cleanup action plan as per Washington State Department of Ecology guidance and regulations. So you can see the site here. City Hall is right, this is a historical photo. And you can see the site had three dry cleaners right here in the southwest corner of the parcel. So this is a busy figure here, and I'll walk you through the proposed remedy and impacts to the community, you know, starting from the north here. You know, City Council or the City Hall is right here, just to the northeast edge of the figure or aerial photo. We're going to start out with some limited excavation, remove the source material that's contaminated with the perchloroethylene impacted soil. And then you can see that there's these blobs or areas with the blue dashed line. And that's basically the plume, the groundwater, contaminated groundwater plume that has the PERC and the degradation products. And we're going to be installing basically five barrier walls by injection with drilling rigs. And these are going to be closely spaced points. And we're going to be injecting a combination of microvalent, microzerovalent iron, colloidal activated carbon, and electron donor substrate. And these materials, these substances are basically going to induce a combination of in situ chemical reduction, anaerobic bioremediation, and absorption processes. And these are proven technologies for PERC and for a lot of different contaminated media and sources. So this is a solid approach and was accepted by ecology with the feasibility study and the cleanup, the draft cleanup action plan. As you can see here in the figure, some businesses are going to be impacted. There's going to be the Ranch Drive-In, Speedy Auto Glass, Hillcrest Bakery, and potentially Washington Federal. Because the drilling is loud, it's, there's a lot of vibration, and it's not just one or two. It's going to be a series of these drilling injection points, basically in a row, doing the subsurface injection. And so there's going to be impact to these businesses. There's going to be some right-of-way closures to 183rd Main Street, and then potentially the east side of Bothell Way. So this graphic shows where we are in the cleanup process. This is from the Washington State Department of Ecology, basically guiding through, you know, the process of initial investigation, assessment, and then the remedial investigation and feasibility study that were wrapped up in the past couple of years. And this is where we are right now, is the public comment period for the cleanup action plan. Like I mentioned earlier, it's going to start end of this month, go for 30 days through end of October. And then if there's minimal comment and minimal rework with the ecology, then we can go into design. And we see that design will happen probably envision it early to mid next year. There'll be some selected pre-design investigation, collecting just a little bit more data. And then we're going to do some bench scale testing and then pilot testing before we go into the full-scale remediation, which will probably start end of next year. And then once that begins, you know, we'll start with the excavations and then go into the injections with the permeable reactive barrier walls. We will be doing periodic monitoring, remedy evaluation, and then where possible, we're going to try to optimize the remedial action. And per the cleanup action plan and the feasibility study, there's a six-to-eight-year anticipated total cleanup time for the plume. But once we feel like the, and look at the data, evaluate, and do any tweaks with optimization, and we feel that the remedy is progressing as designed, then development activities or other types of activities for the unused parcels can proceed. Okay, moving over to the Lot P South site. It was a former North Shore School District bus barn fuel facility. And between 2007, 2019, there were several investigations and soil removal actions. And we had good news last month. We, our consultant collected last quarter and verified four consecutive quarters of groundwater that were below cleanup levels. So we met the requirements for the state cleanup agencies, and we've requested a property-specific no further action with the Pollution Liability Insurance Agency, or PLEA. And so we anticipate a decision from PLEA late November, early December. And if they do issue a no further action, then the city is, can move forward on whatever you all want to do with the property. Thank you for your time. Any questions?
Councilmember Zornz?
No questions. Really, it's just how sobering it is to look at how long it's going to take to clean up. I think, you know, of the phrase, don't cry over spilled milk. Well, this had great impact. I don't know how many years the three dry cleaners were in operation, 50s and 60s. I don't know how many years the, the three dry cleaners were in operation, 50s and 60s?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, not into the, so 20 years of contributing to that. It's a huge cleanup, and I'm appreciative of all the detail and thought that's going into it. When the plan is designed, is it going to look like what happened over here at Lot D where there were, I don't know, or is it dealing, it was like there were monitors, there was electronic?
So that was different.
Dealing with a different kind of problem?
Yeah, so the Lot D contamination was more centralized. It was like a box, and that was ideal for thermal treatment. The Ultra site unfortunately is like a, it's like a pancake or two pancakes, so it's kind of thin or thinner, and it's not as conducive to thermal treatment. And so really, it's really, the remedy plan for it is a good one-two-three punch. You know, dealing with the zerovalent iron is going to jumpstart the reductive dechlorination process, and then the colloidal activated carbon in itself has three different processes. And at some point, I can, you know, present on those kind of chemical processes if you're interested. And, but it does, it does it more than one way, you know. And, and then the electron donor is kind of the follow-up with providing all the, the basically food or parts of the food that helps with the metabolic and respiration processes for the anaerobic microbes that will help degrade the contaminants.
So are we basically talking about some inorganic and organic chemistry going on?
Exactly.
Okay.
So there's abiotic and biotic processes.
Okay, well, I have a couple chemists at my house who would love to see the, you know, how, how all that, you know, equations work out. And I can just not appreciatively, knowing that, you know, it took some work, but I just marvel that we can figure out how to do this. Are there going, do you anticipate, once we put up these barrier walls, it will be raised above the surface?
Oh, no, no. I'm sorry for not describing it. So once they get completed, these, these injection points, they're going to be sealed with basically cement or concrete grout. So all you're going to see are some little spots on the ground, basically.
Okay, good, good. So life can go on while they're working their magic?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the update and information. I'm just curious, is this the last of the two properties that we need to clean up?
Well, there is Ultra and there is Riverside. And I will be probably presenting, giving an update on Riverside because we're going to be doing the draft cleanup action plan, public comment period, probably starting, probably end of October, or it might be early November. So I will be updating you all on that, too.
Okay, and will that work take place approximately the same time, or is that going to be a little later, or?
That'll, it'll be roughly the same time. It'll be designed in early next year, and then we see the remedial action, full remedial action happening end of next year, or second half, basically.
Okay, and then, once we get all these items in place, I think you had mentioned the 68-year timeframe, but work could proceed potentially on those properties?
Yes, what we'd like to do is, is just to make sure, the first two or three or so years, we want to make sure that the, the bugs, the microbes are doing their thing, the zerovalent iron is doing their thing. And if we have to have any, if we have to do any tweaks, you know, for optimization or potentially major tweaks, we can do it with the full access to the sites. And so we would like to have that time for evaluation and determining if the remedies are really on track, and if they need to be steered in a little bit of different direction, then we have availability of the properties. But once we have a good feel that, yes, things are on track, then it's like, then, yes, that the development or whatever can happen, kind of like at Lot D where, as you know, there's bioremediation happening right now, anaerobic, and of course, there's construction happening.
Okay, and so overall, I think 2012 is when we first acquired these properties, I think you had mentioned, correct?
The, I believe it was the Ultra site, it was 2012.
12, yeah, okay. And then so final cleanup, we think two to three years will be in a point where we can actually start to maybe move into construction after we start the process?
We will evaluate in, in two to three years, you know, where, if we can make that recommendation, sir.
Okay, so the only reason I'm asking those questions is because, you know, we want to make sure that we're communicating with the public, the community, to let them know when these, these properties will be available for development potentially in the future. So that comes to mind. I think the determination for Lot P South, you had mentioned maybe coming in as early as November, December?
Yes, sir.
Correct? So once, once that happens, then we'll be able to move forward with something on that, that property, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and lastly, when it, when it comes to overall costs to the city for all of this cleanup, can you describe a little bit of how that process happens, how we get grant funding to do these projects, or where that funding would come from?
Well, a good chunk of it is from the Washington State Department of Ecology. And I'm, I'm not prepared right now to give you the percentages or the figures, you know, I could, I could be, I could become, I'll be more prepared next meeting or update. But I know a sizable percentage is from the, from ecology.
Okay, yeah, I would be, I'd be interested in maybe having a full package update for council to kind of, a little bit of a history on where we were, where we've come from, you know, the costs associated with it, how the city's been able to get grant funding, where that funding's come from. As we go through the final, these final phases of these property cleanups, I think it's important that we be able to educate the community on what we've been able to do with what we have. So I, thank you for the presentation. I know you weren't prepared for that today, but just wanted to make sure that we had an opportunity here from you in the future.
Thank you, sir.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Scott, so much for doing this. My first point here, I was going to say, thank you so much for this presentation, because as a community member, you know, as a resident who drives by and walks by this, this, at least Ultra lands, like I was always wondering, what's, what's up with this ugly piece of land that nobody wants to do anything with? And now I know. So I was wondering if we can post this, or maybe a more consumer-friendly version, or maybe this one itself is very helpful, on the website, so that, you know, we can point people to it.
Well, as part of the public outreach or public involvement comment period for the cleanup, draft cleanup action plan, we are working with ecology to issue a fact sheet. And so that, that'll be sent pretty soon to the affected community. And so that'll be available, I believe, on ecology's website, and maybe we can put it on our website, you know, I'm, you know, there'll, there'll be a variety of ways that it can be pushed out to the public.
Just to educate people on the process, like we have these things sitting there, and I'm sure I'm not the only one who was wondering what's going on, so this is very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next question is, speaking of not being used for the next, for the foreseeable future, but there are, the plume is going under existing businesses and areas of use, yet you're, we're still going to go through some cleanup. I was wondering if we can use the Ultra site, Ultra, Ultra, the site to do any temporary, as the cleanup is happening, can that land be used for temporary, for temporary events or purposes? Since, my understanding is that it's going to be under, all the cleanup is going to be underground.
Well, after, we're going to do initial, the, the site right on the southwest of the, of the City Hall. You know, once we get done with the excavation and it's, you know, backfilled, you know, that, that's a good question. I mean, that could, you know, we could, we could put that in the design or make that one of the design objectives, is to have kind of a seal to make sure that, you know, it's, it can take traffic and it's, you know, capable of any kind of events. We might want to have access to the site later on, but I think temporary events, you know, it might be a.
Deputy Mayor, I think where, where we'd want to go with that is to take a, I don't know that we want to commit to anything tonight, but as we look at this, I think we can put time, a timeline together, and I think also, you know, coupling with the questions that Councilmember McNeil had, I think there's a good storytelling aspect in here of being able to show a chronology of when that might occur. I think we can do some follow-up work on that.
Sounds good. I would have done the same thing, City Manager. Last question, last question, sorry. Because this is, this is interesting to me. I'm not a chemist, so when I hear organic and organic chemistry, as an electrician engineer, my brain shuts down, but you know. How do you know that the areas between the barriers, because you know you have several places where you're going to have the, you know, all that, the filters and stuff? So how is that, how do you know the areas between those barriers aren't going to be?
Well, there's, during the feasibility study, it was an alternatives analysis, and they explored different, you know, patterns of installing the injection points. And this was selected as most effective but least invasive for all the businesses. And so the spacing of those barrier walls was basically selected on hydrogeology, basically the groundwater flow, and the predicted, basically, treatment time that it would take from contaminants to go through the barrier wall, and then also for the zerovalent iron and the activated carbon and the electron donor to be injected, basically the contact time as well. So it was optimized, you know, given the site conditions and the availability of space. So, you know, in an ideal world, if there were no businesses and it was just a flat, you know, piece of ground, then we'd want to go everywhere, but, but then it would be a lot more costly, and it would be much more invasive and disruptive to businesses. So this was, you know, kind of the optimized remedy that was selected.
I see.
And hopefully that answers your question.
It does, yeah. Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you so much again, I appreciate it.
I just have a couple of quick questions. So when we drill down the barrier wall, is that collecting the pollution so that we can then remove it, or do those chemicals neutralize that somehow?
Well, it's actually injected, the chemicals or those products are actually injected. So we're not going to be extracting any groundwater, we're strictly injecting into the groundwater, into the formation. And I can describe that in the next presentation, have some graphics, but there's, there's several neat chemical processes that are happening. And so it's really injection into the formation, and, and then once it's there, then basically the kinetics of the zerovalent iron and the colloidal activated carbon, you know, several processes, quite a few processes are going to happen. And then you also, and those are just the abiotic processes. Then you have also the biological processes that will kick in, and that's where, you know, really neat things happen. But we're going to have monitoring wells and some other data points where we can monitor the progress, watch the parameters in the groundwater to make sure that they're doing what we want. We're going to see the degradation products of the, that PERC and the, because there's several steps in the dechlorination process between where the, those products, those solvents are losing their chlorine ions, basically, and then they became, they become basically inert, it's chloride ions or just basically ethane and ethane, which are inert compounds.
Awesome. So the point in injecting is to get all the stuff we're injecting everywhere, not to bring all of the PERC into those places?
Correct, yes, sir.
Cool. That was really my only question, and it wasn't super necessary from a policy point of view, so my apologies that I took a few minutes out of curiosity. But thank you so much for your time, we appreciate the update. And I am, I'm also looking forward to kind of seeing what it would look like to have some way that we could easily point people toward to communicate, like here's what's going on, in a, in an accessible method. So I don't remember whose idea that was, but it was a good one. So thank you so much for your time.
All right, thank you.
All right, City Manager?
Thank you, and actually, just to follow up on that, I do want to just call out the two takeaways that I captured from that presentation, which you really covered, but I think, just in terms of what we communicate and we package together, I think for a future council meeting would be around costs. And I think, I like the timeline concept of looking at where did we start, what have been the actions, and then where are we headed? I think that makes a lot of sense. And with that, then also looking at our broad communications aspect, including posting tonight's presentation, which I think we can come up with a solution. So we'll debrief tomorrow and make sure that it is available online somewhere, and yeah, keep, keep refining that process. So thank you for the feedback. Tonight for the City Manager Report, I actually only have one quick thing, and it's mainly because of the presentation that we did move to the fourth for the legislative agenda. As council may recall, last week, we brought a contract forward for our statewide lobbyists. And there was a question that was raised that I think was really great, again, much like this last presentation, mainly to help communicate to our community the value of some of the investments that we make. And so last week, council considered and approved a contract with the state lobbyist for just under $70,000 a year, and there was a question of what have we received in the last couple of years? So just want to call out that we did, staff did review, and Bothell's received a $7 million grant from the state government for widening of Bothell Way, Bothell Everett Highway Project, one that we've received a lot of cash flow on recently, in addition to $600,000 in 2021 and $500,000 in 2022 for the North Creek Regional Trail, and another quarter million dollars for a transportation demand management plan in Canyon Park. So those are just some of the examples that we've seen. I wanted to call that out and would have included it in my introduction with our lobbyist, Shelley, had she been here tonight, but didn't want to let a couple more weeks linger. I thought that was good information to get out there. So thank you again for approving the investment last week. We're excited to have a council's legislative policy conversation here in a few weeks and get well ahead of the legislative session that's coming before us all too soon. I have a feeling 2023 is going to creep up on us. So with that, no other updates from the City Manager Report tonight.
Thank you. Council Committee Reports. Well, we're going quick tonight, aren't we? All right, I think next up, we have visitor comment. The city has accepted visitor comment in writing, as well as accepted signup sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted to the city clerk no later than 3:00 PM today were forwarded to all city council members and are part of the record. City Clerk, do we have any visitor comment?
We did not have anybody sign up to speak, nor do I see anybody in the attendee room. However, I do see one gentleman in the audience, I'm not sure if you're here for public comment. Nope, we do not have any.
Boy, talk about putting him on the spot right there. All right. Next up is projected agenda discussion. Anybody on council have an item they'd wish to discuss for a future agenda? Me neither. I would love to accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
I second.
All right, I have a motion from Councilmembers Zorn and a second from Deputy Mayor Alcabra to approve the consent agenda. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? All right, City Clerk?
Please say yes or no when I call your name, Councilmember Zorn?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Yes.
Passes 4-0 with Councilmembers Alderks and Minky, absent and excused.
Thank you. All right, first agenda bill for the night is AB 22123, consideration of a one-year contract extension with Recology King County. City Manager Stannard?
Thank you, Mayor. So this item tonight, we're going to be welcoming Emily Warnock, I believe, online. She's our Sustainability and Engagement Coordinator. And the item before you tonight is, as you mentioned, a one-year contract, extend the contract with Recology to consider whether or not that should be done, the contract that would go through June 30th, 2024. And with that, we'll turn it over to Emily to bring up her presentation and move us along.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council. Give me just a moment while I bring up my presentation here. Emily?
Emily, you're muted.
Apologies. Are you able to hear me now?
Yes, but we cannot see the presentation anymore.
Okay, let me try to share my screen again. I apologize for the technical difficulties. All right, are you able to hear me and see my screen now?
Yes.
Great. Well, thank you so much for your patience there. Again, I am Emily Warnock, Sustainability and Engagement Coordinator, and I have a couple of topics that I'll be discussing tonight. The first is a decision point before council regarding sending our contract with Recology to provide garbage recycling and organics collection through June 30th, 2024. And I'll also be providing an overview of King County's REPLUS program and upcoming changes to their solid waste disposal rate structure. Currently, our contract with Recology is set to expire on June 30th of next year. The contract gives us the option to exercise up to three one-year extensions granted under the original terms and conditions of the contract without renegotiating. Last year, we opted to exercise the first of those three one-year extensions, and staff recommendation is to extend for another year. To do that, staff would need to provide written notice to Recology by the end of this year. Extending the contract would provide time for us to thoroughly assess options for solid waste disposal moving forward, while also incorporating a more heavy focus on engaging the community in that decision-making process. The contract was also first signed in 2015. So extending means Bothell customers would continue to pay service rates based on the numbers determined in that original contract, with the only adjustments for that service portion of the rate coming from annual consumer price index changes. The waste management market has changed significantly since the contract was first signed. So it's estimated that new bids wouldn't be as competitive. I also wanted to add that overall community feedback for Recology has been positive, especially when it comes to the Recology store and the additional curbside recycling services that are provided. However, like all of our haulers in the area, Recology has had its challenges through the pandemic, with the store being closed, and then the winter weather we had at the beginning of this year. I am working with them to address these challenges. So far, they've hired more customer service representatives. We have the store back open. And to accommodate our growing city, they're hiring more route managers and drivers as well. We have a few options for how to proceed after another one-year extension. The city could elect to extend the current contract with Recology for a final year allowed under our contract, which would push out expiration to June 30th, 2025. We could also look at renegotiating the contract with Recology, or we could undergo an RFP process, both of which would require a consultant with solid waste contract expertise to help us navigate. To give you a better idea of these options and their associated timelines, I thought I'd walk you through a bit of the history of the process when we initially moved to Recology. So in 2005, we started a new contract with Waste Management that was set to expire at the end of 2012. The contract allowed the city to extend for two years, which we elected to do at that point. And that pushed out expiration to the end of 2014. At that time, we had persistent service issues and ongoing problems with contract negotiations with Waste Management that led staff to recommend going out to bid and hiring a consultant to lead the process to look at hauler options. And like I mentioned, we did seek to renegotiate with management prior to that. The consultant that we selected, Epicenter Services, was brought onboard in July of 2013 to help staff in developing the RFP and leading the process. And the RFP was finalized and published in October and closed in January of 2014. All in all, we got three proposals submitted by the three major haulers in the area, Recology, Waste Management, and Republic Services. Staff presented those proposals over the course of four council meetings throughout the spring. And those presentations included comparisons of rates and services between the haulers, data and feedback that we gathered from interviews with other cities about their haulers, and a ranking of proposals based on criteria established with the consultants. All in all, the RFP process took about a year, and moving to a new hauler took an additional six months. All that to say, it's a lengthy process, and we want to make sure we take the time needed and provide adequate attention to how we go about moving forward, and also incorporate a stronger focus on engaging the community in this process this time around. We have proposed funding for a consultant in the 2023 to 24 budget. Before I go over King County's rate restructure, are there any questions about the proposed contract extension?
Councilmember Zornz.
Again, thank you for the presentation so far. And I remember this coming before city council and trying to decide between the, I wasn't part of council then, but I remember sitting on the discussion and how thoughtful they were in deciding to go with Recology. You had made a comment that, I think it was in 2025, that it wouldn't be as competitive in the bidding process. I was wondering if I could get some more information on that.
Yes. So the rates that we established when we signed our contract with Recology in 2015 were based on, the, the service component was based on rates that were established at that point. The Waste Management system has changed a lot. There have been a lot of new developments, there's new technology. But in addition to that, there are changes in markets available for a lot of the different types of recyclables that's led to, you know, some challenges for haulers to figure out how to dispose of these products. So based on what we've been hearing from other cities who have recently undergone this process, comparatively, the, the bids haven't been as competitive as staying with our current contract under our current rates.
Okay, gotcha. The other, you know, every now and then I'm out and I'll see, you know, out of the area, I'll see Waste Management or Republic. Are they still active players in the region for haulers?
They are still active. Kirkland recently resigned a contract with Waste Management. But the general trends that we're seeing in the area with cities like Taquilla, Burien, Mercer Island, they are moving towards Recology.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I think that looks like it for questions for now.
Great, thank you. I will go ahead and move on to a brief overview of a couple of things that King County is working on implementing, the REPLUS plan and rate restructure. So King County Solid Waste Division's new REPLUS program is set to officially launch in November. It's a multi-year effort that reimagines our regional solid waste system from one that's disposal-based to one that focuses on recovery, recycling, and regeneration to help meet King County's goals of a zero-waste future and develop a zero-waste circular economy. Currently, up to 70% of what ends up in the landfill could have been reused, recycled, or composted. So the REPLUS plan is aiming to find ways to keep more of those materials in use for longer, secure more markets for those materials, and identify new and innovative ways to reduce waste. Overall, the efforts will help us to meet the goal for zero food waste and zero waste of reusable resources by 2030. Which leads me into King County's upcoming changes to their solid waste disposal rate structure. Currently, the Solid Waste Division derives about 90% of its revenue from a basic fee to dispose of garbage at the landfill, called a tipping fee. At a time when we're working hard to keep materials out of the landfill through efforts like REPLUS, we've decided to reassess where we are with this rate structure and help to align with county values and goals. The new structure moves away from relying on that per-ton garbage disposal fee by including a fixed annual charge to stabilize base level revenues from drops in tonnage. And the fixed annual charge for each city will then be proportional to the tons of garbage generated within the city, which incentivizes each city to work to reduce their waste and recycle and compost what can be in order to keep rates lower. The rate restructure won't raise rates over what is typically expected for annual rate increases. So it'll be in line with what we've seen in the past. And cities are generally supportive of this rate restructure. Okay, so how does this play in? City contracts with area haulers typically dictate how King County disposal charges are included in customer rates, along with the methodology for adjusting the rates each year. In order to pass the charges of the fixed annual charge through to solid waste customers, we'll need to amend our contract with Recology. To help cities with those contract amendments, King County provided funding for a consultant, Epicenter Services, to work with three cities, one with Recology, one with Waste Management, and one with Republic, to produce standard amendment templates specific to each hauler. And those will have some flexibility for cities to be able to customize them to our own contracts. Currently, we're working with Recology with assistance from Epicenter Services, other Recology cities, and King County on, on that process. Implementation was set for January 1st, 2023. However, that made the timing incredibly challenging for cities to amend contracts to meet our rate notification deadlines. So cities and haulers requested implementation be pushed back to the beginning of 2024. And just in this afternoon, King County Council passed the rate restructure with 2024 implementation. So stay tuned. I'll be coming back next year to talk more about this. One other thing I wanted to note is with the delay, the current rate structure will continue through 2023. So we'll have the same rate increases of about 79 cents on the average monthly bill for curbside customers. With that, I'll say thank you for your time. And if anyone has more questions, I'm happy to answer what I can.
And Mayor, before you open it up for questions, I do want to just take a pause to thank Emily and to Public Director Aaron Lenhart, too. On that last item, it went, it was, Emily made it sound seamless. But I do really want to thank our team for being, showing some regional leadership and communicating what was really a red flag of a potential problem of dates colliding and a decision being made, like days before we would legally be, have to notice a community. It sounds simple of, like a common sense solution of why would we do this? And yet, it does happen. And I really appreciate the work that they did to patiently communicate on behalf of the community, what, what they were seeing as a real potential conflict and being able to work out a resolution and get that communicated to King County. So thank you both for everything that you did.
That's awesome to hear. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Emily. And thank you, Aaron. This is great. I have a couple of questions because I'm new to all this. So the first question is, what does the city rate me? I get a bill every month from Recology. What is, like, what does the city have to do with that?
Yeah, so within our contract with Recology, it outlines the methods that we have for determining rates for customers. So we approve the rates determined by Recology. So the, the customer rate currently is comprised of a service component, which is adjusted annually based on the Consumer Price Index increases, as well as the disposal component. And that disposal component is determined by King County. And then with the rate restructure, it'll be adding that fixed annual charge component, along with the disposal component and service component to, again, align a little bit better with our county and regional values and goals. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that, that makes sense. And then Recology would pay the county for that extra fee that they, the set fee then, okay.
Yes, Recology will pay the fees.
Okay. Well, this is a King County REPLUS, the, the new program. How does that relate to, how does that apply to Snohomish County portion of Bothell? Or do they, does, does it not apply?
That's a great question. So the entire city of Bothell is within the King County system. We have an ILA with King County to manage all solid waste generated within the city under that King County system.
Okay, cool. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation and being proactive with our approach on this. I had a couple of questions relating back to the change from Waste Management to Recology. What were some of the issues that we had back then that, that actually made us make that change?
Generally speaking, I can say that, from what I've, I've read and heard from staff, we had a lot of service complaints from the community about missed collections, delays in picking up those missed collections after they were reported. We had issues with new customers not receiving their containers when they were requested, and general customer service delays that led to, to us looking at going out to bid.
Fabulous. And do you have any successes and opportunities from this past year with Recology that you can speak about?
Definitely. We've been doing a lot of work with Recology to pick up their customer service levels. They had some challenges, as I mentioned, during the pandemic. They've hired an additional two customer service representatives. So far for Bothell, again, to accommodate the growing city that we have here. They're looking at adding more customer service representatives, currently hiring for those, two additional drivers, two to three more route supervisors here in Bothell, another commercial route, and a new front-load truck to split a route between commercial and multifamily properties, which should help to, again, accommodate us as we are growing. In addition to that, we've talked about winter weather and the challenges we had at the start of this year, and laid out a plan for better communicating with customers and bringing back centralized disposal containers like we've seen in the past in the event of snow preventing us from, Recology from collecting customers for an extended period of time. So those are a few. So, those are a few of the things we've been working on. And again, with the store being reopened, that helps significantly with collection of special item recycling for customers as well.
Fabulous. Thank you. Thank you for sharing that. I will share you one personal notice. I, we have a driver in our neighborhood that goes out of his way to ensure that he's picking up the cans, even though some of us take our cans out a little late, they do get picked up. So, I do appreciate the service. They go above and beyond, in some cases, to ensure that we're taken care of. The last question I have is around the CPI increase that you mentioned. Do we know what the last CPI increase was?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I'd be happy to get you that information.
Sure, that'd be, that'd be great to know. So, thank you again so much for being proactive on this. I really appreciate all your hard work and look forward to continuing to working with Recology.
Councilmember Zornz?
Okay. Thank you, Emily, and thank you, Aaron. I'm sure that it's not just the people of Bothell, but some other municipalities went with that extension, so it's a, it's a big thank you. I know that the piece of, especially like with multifamily and getting them more engaged in recycling is an ongoing process. My question to you is, I see what King County is endeavoring to be more proactive in how we recycle and repurpose and reuse. Is there, we've had a problem with a market in finding, you know, recyclers to take glass and paper. Is that market picking up at all, or is it still things that were typically being recycled, going to the landfill because we can't find anybody to recycle them for us?
The markets are picking up, and I want to assure you that Recology has sent all recyclables that are collected to be recycled. So, none of our items generated in our city are being landfilled if you're putting them in the recycling bin. In addition to that, REPLUS has an element of it that is looking at different outlets for developing those markets, not just for common recycling items, currently common recycling items, but also new items going forward. So, that will be a part of the REPLUS plan.
Okay, thank you. And then, the last thing is, I have to thank you for saying that customer service has improved with Recology, because with the pandemic and with snow, City Council got a few emails, just a few, and we haven't had those since the store has reopened. So, that is much appreciated. They're back doing their job, and I think the communicate, the community is much happier as well. So, thank you.
I just want to say thank you. I'll be supporting via staff recommendation extending this contract as well. I'm in an annexed area, so I'm only like a year into my experience with Recology so far. I'm not ready to give it up, guys. Like, I'm looking forward to a little bit more of this because it is a significantly better service than I had up until about a year ago. I remember when we had that big storm, there was a mayor's meeting, and I went to that, and every single mayor there was complaining up and down about their garbage provider, regardless of who it was. I don't expect we would have had a different experience or scenario that we would prefer in that time period with anybody else, and I'm excited about this one up. I will entertain a motion.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yes, I'd like to move the recommended action to authorize staff to provide written notification to extend, oh, to extend the Comprehensive Garbage, Recyclables, and Organics Collections Contract with Recology, King County for one year through June 30th, 2023.
Second.
All right. I have a motion on the floor from Councilmember McNeil and a second from Councilmember Zornz to authorize staff to provide written notification to extend the Comprehensive Garbage, Recyclables, and Organics Collection Contract with Recology, King County for one year through June 30th, 2023. Would anybody like to speak to the motion?
City Clerk?
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmembers Zornz?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Yes.
Passes 4-0 with Councilmembers Alderks and Manki absent and excused.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Emily. All right, next up, we have Agenda Bill 22125, Update of Development of Design Alternatives for the Samamish River and Waynita Creek Restoration Project. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the first of two study session items. So, just as a reminder on these two items, staff are here this evening to inform council and to get some feedback. For this first topic, it is an opportunity for your feedback and input, as staff are preparing the development of a design alternative for improving salmon habitat of the former Wayne Golf Course property. And as mentioned, we are joined here tonight by Janet Gier, who is our supervisory surface water engineer. So, Janet, thank you for the presentation tonight.
Thank you. I'm just going to get the presentation up here real quick. Okay. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Again, my name is Janet Gier. I'm in the Surface Water area under Utilities and Development Services and Public Works, and the goals for tonight are just to give you a high-level overview of our current status and get any input that you would like to have considered for our design concepts as they're being developed. So, as you know, the city acquired the former Wayne Golf Course property for environmental and recreational purposes. This project focuses on the salmon habitat restoration and conservation portion of the east side of the property. We removed the sloped areas and the forested areas from the project because of the inability to provide salmon habitat in the highly erosive soils on site. And so, that shaded blue area that you see there, that is the project area we're talking about. So, this super-busy slide is just an explanation of the grants that were used to acquire the property came with the constraints on how the space can be used. For example, stream and wetland protection areas cannot be impacted for activities other than restoration except for trail crossings. This project is also partially funded by the Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office for the sole purpose of exploring stream and habitat restoration opportunities for the federally protected Chinook salmon. The grant-funded work includes site investigations, stakeholder engagement, the alternatives assessment for up to four different alternatives, and the conceptual design of the preferred alternative. City Public Works Department is funding the match and the additional costs to bring that conceptual design up to preliminary design, and that so that we can move into the permitting process and start talking with the tribes and the state and federal agencies so that we can keep this moving forward, and then it'll help us to get grant funding for the next final design and construction phases. One of the things I wanted to make sure I pointed out on here is, this is the wetland delineation, and so, the only area that is outside of a stream or wetland buffer is that white triangle there. So, if there's something really exciting you'd like to do on site that isn't a trail crossing, that's your opportunity. It's not very big, but it might be a park bench or something. And the other thing I wanted to make sure I mentioned is those two optional, they're the sage-colored trails. So, the King County Regional Trail System in the easement, that option one is in the acquisition, and we've been asked to provide that option two, which moves the trail outside of the Samamish River buffer. And so, you'll see both of those alternatives show up in the preliminary, I mean, the conceptual designs so that you can choose the alignment of the trail that we'd like to see. And also, we would need to bring that to King County to make sure that they're okay with that stream or the alignment. But just to clarify, we wouldn't be building it. We're just providing the space for it so that we don't put something there that precludes the trail from being able to be installed on site. Okay, so this is just a more simplified map so that you can kind of see, those are the buffers again, so that you can kind of get an idea of the alternatives that'll come forward for consideration. Alternative one is just a full restoration native plant installation and sloping of the Waynita Creek area and then along the Samamish River. And then, this little green, let's see if I can show you. If you can see my arrow here, this green section, those are piped tributaries of Waynita Creek, and we would propose to daylight those in all of the alternatives. The second alternative will do all of those mentioned in the first alternative, plus we'll include a side channel along the Samamish River. The third alternative will do everything in that first, and then we'll include a widening at the mouth of the Waynita Creek. Both of those, this alternative two and three, provide habitat for juvenile Chinook salmon, which would be really desirable to RIA-8 and the RCO folks. And then, alternative four is likely going to be a blending of those three alternatives or a concept that we haven't yet thought of, and so, those are also up for consideration. The Parks Board last week did ask that that alternative four include the side channel and the mouth widening in transition as one option. So, we'll likely see something like that as well. So, for timeline, the city and consultants have completed two years of data collection on site, and our field investigations are now finished. We monitored the groundwater. We did do a critical areas analysis and topographic conditions, and then we went to determine the potential presence of cultural resources on site. So, all of that has been complete. We've also conducted initial outreach with stakeholder groups to get input for conceptual design development. And the consultant team is now in the process of taking this information and creating those design alternatives that will work under the existing site conditions that we have. Once the concepts are created, they're going to be scored by city staff and the consultant team to identify a preferred alternative. Included in the scoring will be stream health benefit, salmon health benefit, level of success, cost to complete, ability to obtain grant funding, ability to maintain and monitor over time, as well as other considerations. And then, at that time, staff will conduct another series of engagement opportunities, bring those alternatives forward to the public, to the stakeholder groups, to the Parks Board, and to City Council, so that you can review all those alternatives, that preferred alternative, and then help us make a decision on which one we would like to move forward. City Council will be asked to decide on a preferred concept probably in December, January, depending on the amount of feedback we get and changes to the conceptual design. So, we're looking forward to bringing that back. November 15th is what we slated right now for a public hearing session, and then, again, probably December, hopefully, or early January for that final decision. Okay. So, these are just the engagement opportunities. Again, we mentioned them, but right now, we're in that Phase One. We've already spoken with stakeholder groups, and we'll continue to do so. After those concepts are created, we'll go into Phase Two. It does include a month-long open-house session virtually once those concepts are put forward, in addition to an in-person public hearing session here and a virtual open-house session in November. And then, once we gather all those comments and feedback, we'll come back forward with the final design, and at that time, you'll be able to see all those final reports. I know we've had a couple of questions about seeing the Cultural Resource Survey, the wetland delineation, and all of that, and that'll be wrapped up together into a final report for everyone. All are welcome to participate in the virtual and in-person sessions and offer additional thoughts and input on the project. So, with that, I'd like to thank you for your time and open it up to any questions that you may have.
Councilmember Zornz?
Very exciting project. Very exciting. And I know there's questions that I should be asking, and I can't think of them. I'm just giddy with anticipation over the potential of this project. And daylighting a couple creeks sounds fabulous to me. I do have a question about, you know, the slope on those. Is there, is there going to be an erosion concern with those once they're daylighted?
So, no. What we do is we go back and transition that area, and so, they have not anticipated any issue with those. One of them actually is piped all the way to the Samamish, and so, I think that it's going to have a much better transition into Waynita, and it'll provide cold-water refuge and all kinds of grades. So, no, we shouldn't have any erosion issues.
Is it, well, do you anticipate it will be just like uncorking where it enters Wayne and just letting it find its natural path? Or is it going to be kind of like what happened on the campus where we try to figure out what its path was originally for North Creek, you know, and restructure what those creeks did before the golf course?
Right. It's a good question. It's one of the things that we'll talk about with the consultant team. Typically, what we do is, because you're dealing with the conditions now, we figure out what'll work the best, and so, we would do a full restoration transition into Waynita, the closest-receiving water. So, that's likely what you'll see. But we can definitely take a look and see if there's any data on what was there before and just know what the brickyard, and then they had the farm there, and it's been altered for quite a long time.
Yeah. So, I'm, I'm like, you know, go big, or I don't know where go home would be on that, but all of those four, you know, make total sense. My only question is, is that when there is a heavy rainfall, what scenario best protects from scrubbing happening from any salmons that, you know, that are eggs that are laid there? Which scenario best protects Wayne from any scrubbing with a lot of water coming through?
Right. So, likely that alternative three, I believe that because we're going to transition and slope the sides, we'll do a full restoration, which will allow for additional meandering of Waynita. And a lot of times, you know, we've got some sediment loading on Waynita Creek, and so, when you have that meandering or allowing it to settle out naturally along those banks, and so, that would probably be the best way to go. But again, you know, there's a lot of other factors in there, and in all the scenarios, we did ask them to provide for sediment capture because we know it's an issue. And so, we're hoping, because I don't know if you've been out there, but Waynita slides are extremely steep, and so, all the scenarios will slope that to some degree to provide additional stabilization. And then, once you get better plantings in there instead of just the blackberry on site, it'll really help capture a lot of that erosion issue that we're dealing with now.
Right. Okay, well, thank you. Just keep us posted on this.
Certainly.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. It is exciting to see where we're going with this. I had a couple of questions around the overall master plan of the Samamish River, the slough. As we talk about, you know, sloughs and things like that and sediments, we find that, you know, each year this time, it's shallower and shallower, right? Like, right now, you can barely get through, out through the mouth into Kenmore there. So, the question is, is there a master plan that we're taking into consideration for the future, or are we just doing this as a one-off project?
Right. As far as we're going, you know, we're just focusing on Waynita and the Samamish River within this section. However, regionally, I know they are, you know, looking at the Samamish. Some of the constraints that we have on there is it is still maintained as a navigable water, and Army Corps does maintain the Ballard locks, which, as you know, dropped at about nine feet in the early, was it 1900s? And that's why we get that slow-moving, which is not allowing for that sediment transport. But as of now, I haven't heard of them doing anything to realign or allowing that meandering back. Army Corps is pretty strict about those, but FEMA gets involved when it's maintained as a levee system, and then, King County comes into play, and so does Department of Natural Resources, and so, it's a pretty big lift for any type of regional conversation. It's definitely something that we can talk about. Aaron, I don't know if there was that group that was talking, all the mayors along the Samamish. Do you remember anything about that?
I don't remember. I, there was a brief conversation while I was in the interim City Manager seat, so I don't know if Kyle has heard anything. I remember Kenmore was pretty actively involved in that, and maybe Mayor, you have been as well, but...
I haven't been involved in those conversations, no.
Okay. I think COVID might have stopped a lot of that conversation, so you might see it pick up again because Kenmore was pretty excited to move forward as a region, and they had to have all the mayors from Samamish all the way down into Lake Washington to try to get a project going together.
Okay, yeah, I just, you know, having the, one of the largest parcels along that waterway and the opportunity to play a huge factor in the restoration and habitat recovery, I think, is critical. And I don't want to lose the opportunity to do the right thing through master planning. I hope we can take our time and master plan things. I know that the community and the region look favorably on this project and us acquiring that land, and I hopefully, we can, we can find ways to work with others and find a master plan that will work, because I know there's other opportunities on the front nine as well, and want to just make sure that we... line as well, and want to just make sure that we have a much bigger plan to bring the whole thing together, whether it be through trails or active spaces or whatever it might be. I think it's important we look at the whole big picture at the same time. So, I'm excited. You know, I see the folks out there working all the time and on the back, and hopefully, I look forward to the day that we see the population of those salmon increase up that river, so, thank you for all your hard work.
Excellent. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll echo what everyone here said. Thank you for that presentation. Thank you for everything. I don't have anything to add, except for, thank you for engaging with all those groups, especially the tribes, because there are few tribes who may lay claim to this land over here, so, thank you for reaching out to them and making them part of the process.
I'm just really looking forward to when this is done. I love being able to move the needle for salmon habitat. I think that's really important and really cool. And, yeah, thank you for your time today, your work on this. I appreciate you coming and letting us know what you're doing.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move on to our next presentation, we're going to take a 10-minute break. It is 7:31. I will see everybody back here at 7:41.
Recording stopped.
I'm going to kick it straight back to City Manager Standard.
All right. Thanks Mayor for the last study session item tonight. You'll recall that back on July 19th, we heard from Urban 3. There were some questions that evening and some follow-up work before we could get the final report from the vendor. And so tonight, our interim Community Development Director Ashley Winchell is here to give council an update and respond to any further questions.
Great. So Mayor Thompson, Deputy Mayor and members of City Council, tonight I'm just providing an update or follow-up to the Urban 3 presentation. In your packet, you'll find their final report. And then Community Development and IS have been working with Urban 3 to receive the final GIS layers and data from their report and presentation. I'm going to focus first on our key takeaways and then provide some recommendations for moving forward. And then I'd like to hear feedback from council on how you'd like to see this information used and thoughts for additional information that you might potentially be seeking. So I'm going to focus on a few just topics for our takeaways. The first one is downtown. And reading, reading the report and reflecting on the presentation, I think one of the big takeaways is that the vision and implementation set forth in the downtown subarea plan have led us toward an active and financially viable downtown. Moving forward, some of the findings that I've found in the report is that there's potential to increase vitality downtown further in the upcoming comprehensive plan update through increased density and tweaks to the urban form through the zoning code and subarea plan. Also, we have a lot of opportunity with several parcels that the city owns downtown. One of their findings was that we had a lot of tax exempt land downtown. And so as we start to redevelop the city-owned parcels, there's opportunity to bring more tax income to downtown. And then finally, I think there's also some considerations in terms of thinking about some of these, these tax exempt parcels are natural areas in Uta-Bothel. And so balancing the value of these areas, they're not necessarily financially productive, but they bring a lot of value to the city in other ways. And so keeping that in consideration as we think about downtown moving forward. The next area I wanted to talk about is Canyon Park. So as you know, last year, we passed the Canyon Park Subarea Plan. And one of the takeaways from the Urban 3 report is really that the foundation put in place from Canyon Park is something that could lead us toward success in that area. A lot of what they presented is in line with what's presented in the Canyon Park Subarea Plan. And so some of those small changes could really increase returns in Canyon Park. One of the things that was recommended in the report moving forward is finding a catalyst project in, in the area. So there's a lot of things that are already either entitled, and so they get to move forward, but not necessarily meeting the Canyon Park Subarea Plan. And then also some essential public facilities that are also looking at that area. And so thinking about a project or working with a developer to use the Canyon Park Subarea Plan for new development and start meeting those plans' goals. There's also potential for future subarea planning. So they looked at some key areas in the city and what could happen if we increased density or changed the requirements in those areas. One of those being Red Barn Village. So in Vision 2050, one of the new, so I think we're all familiar with regional growth centers, Canyon Park's a regional growth center. There's now something called countywide growth centers, and these are smaller areas that have been identified by the counties as they're candidate centers. And so if we put in regulations that meet certain activity units, then those can be considered countywide growth centers. And there's potential for grant funding in those areas. And so one of those in Snohomish County is the Red Barn Village. And then also downtown has been identified. So the planning downtown really probably helps us qualify for a countywide growth center, but thinking about future subarea planning in the Red Barn Village to take advantage of the countywide growth center candidacy in Snohomish County. One of the other takeaways is looking at our residential land use. So their findings show that there's a higher value per acre for more dense housing. And I think we all know that there's a finite amount of land in Bothell. And so thinking about how we use the remaining land available for redevelopment and looking at, are there different types of housing that provide ownership opportunities, help us meet our housing needs, and also have a higher return per acre? So that was just really quick key takeaways. I wanted to focus more on recommended next steps and hear from you all on how you'd like to use this information moving forward. Some of staff recommendations would be to utilize the comprehensive plan update to explore some of the recommendations of the Urban 3 report, and creating land use policies around those recommendations that best serve Bothell's goals, and really balancing our financial goals and our aspirational goals and vision. Further, seeking countywide planning centers is one of our recommendations, specifically the Snohomish County Red Barn Village. Looking strategically at increased density. So one of the great things about Washington State is we do a buildable lands report, which shows us where there's land that has the potential for redevelopment or is, could be developed at a higher density. And so are some of those areas key places for strategic rezones or permitting different types of development than is permitted today? And balancing that with potential market analysis to determine what land will yield the best results. So you could put regulations everywhere, but the market may not yield certain types of development. And so are there certain places that we should be focusing on where the market could yield different types of product or different types of density? There's also, one of their recommendations was to explore long-term leases for city-owned properties versus sales. And so that's something that I think we could start thinking about with some of our remaining downtown parcels. Looking at some form of catalyst project for Canyon Park. So what properties are available for potential redevelopment? And how could those start to meet the Canyon Park Subarea Plan vision? And then one thing to keep in consideration as, as we undertake new studies, understanding what we want to do with that information moving forward, and what information do we need to make decisions? And then also finally, considering how we balance financial goals and community values with this information moving forward. So that's just a really quick overview of the report that's in your packet, some of staff's takeaways from that report, and then our recommended next steps. I'd really like to hear from you all on how you all envision moving some of the, using this information moving forward, how you'd like to explore these findings in our comprehensive plan update. Are there certain parts of the city that we should be focusing on in this update based on the report? And then any thoughts you all have on long-term land leases versus sales? And then we did, there was a request from council at looking at the study on whether single-family residential land, essentially their taxes cover the services provided. We did receive a quote on that that I can share with council. And we also have some thoughts on how we could potentially review that maybe at a smaller scale in the comprehensive plan, or do that after the comprehensive plan, or as a part of like an annexation analysis. So with that, I'll pass it off to you all for any questions you may have of staff on this report.
Councilmember Lawrence?
I'm seeing a pattern here. So I hope my fellow council members will ask questions that I miss. And I'll try not to, I'll try to keep this somewhat brief. Red Barn, the Red Barn area, is that the east side of 522 above Lake Pleasant?
Yeah, it's the area generally near the Safeway on the east side. Yes.
So as we talk about development, except for impacting Horse Creek and Lake Pleasant, there's really no single-family homes that we would be impacting with more development there?
I don't believe so. I would have to look at the exact boundaries to know what development's currently there.
Yeah, I can't think of anyone immediately on that side of the basin. So yes, that's a good conversation to have. You know, I'll be asking about, which I'm sure you would be as well, erosion and soil stability and that kind of thing. Can it bear the burden of a lot of construction there? Brickyard, park and ride transit area is prime for putting multifamily and maybe some ancillary services there for people. I mean, that, most of that area around that clover leaf is underused. So absolutely. Leases on land, I think Wenatchee, I just read recently, the Pibus Market, they're extending the lease area beyond where the Pibus Market is, and the city's retaining ownership. So that's an interesting question. I would like to know how that's working for them, and if that's something that we should be considering as well. I think the University of Washington does that with its properties in downtowns, and it's been working for them. Any changes that we make, my question is, are we being a good neighbor? Neighbors accommodate each other, but are we still being thoughtful neighbors? And out of the packet itself, I don't think that we have Linwood data because they didn't have, they weren't part of the Linwood conversation, but I would have loved to have seen some data on what the ground, the, what, well, we know Linwood outdoes us in retail sales, but I would have loved to have seen how, how big that, big that is. Then here's a question for you. And when we've talked about, because there is a problem of getting brick and mortar stores in mixed use to come in, and, and I suppose most of that is the, just the rent problems. But we often talk about getting anchor stores. And you know, 20, 30 years ago, it was like Home Depot, who is a good performer for us, being an anchor store. So my question to you is, in the 21st century, what do we call our anchors for bringing, bringing people in?
In terms of like, what, is it a store, or is it residential?
Yeah. What is it that keeps, what is it that attracts people, anchors in the 21st century?
It's a really good question. I think it depends on the area and what, what the goal of that area is. I mean, I know in some areas, you need more people living there for certain businesses to come. Other areas, it may be the, the transportation system around it. So I think that's, it's kind of subjective to what area we're talking about.
Okay. Well, I'll be, I'll be, as, as this unfolds over the next couple of years, I'll be.
And I think that's something we can keep in mind, too, of like, what, what situation do we need to create in order to reach the goals we want to reach?
Right.
Because, you know, some places may be looking for a walkable environment. Some places may be looking for easy transportation for their customers. And so as we're looking at each subarea, if we know what, what types of tenants we want to have, then I think we can really think about what environment we need to create to attract those tenants. And sometimes, too, it's waiting for the market to catch up with what we want. And so sometimes there's a little bit of patience in, in, in that long-term goal.
Right, right.
And then one thing I would say, I know there wasn't Linwood data in this, but the Alliance for Housing Affordability in Snohomish County did do an entire, they worked with Urban 3 on an analysis in Snohomish County. And so I can see if they have any recordings of that presentation because they did do a small analysis on some, on Linwood and Edmonds and all of those communities.
Fantastic.
So it's probably not as in-depth as we got for Bothell, but it may help spur some, some thoughts or help us understand
That would be great.
what that retail environment looks like.
That would be great. Okay, thank you for thinking of that. I did notice, while I was comparing page, well, I will confess that I cheated, that I had family members who are also into data. Look at, look at this agenda packet. And the intensity build-out on page 248, I know it was just representative for Bothell when we went to high density, actually probably would look more like Bellevue's intensity build-out, what they have on page 234. I can't imagine that you could put that level of high density without spreading out some. I just make that as an observation. Then the other thing that I noticed on, out of the packet on page 240, on page 240 is our import number of people in Bothell is bigger than our export number, which says there's a lot of people coming into the, into Bothell during the day, which makes Bothell a destination place, whether it's work, or school, or what it is. And so something that we have to stay mindful of is that transit and parking are necessary for, to, to function as a destination place. So where transit does not fill in the gap, we have to bite the bullet and look at parking. We just have to. I mean, we, we talk about being regional players. Well, one regional piece is, we have people who come east of us, who come in here to hook up with our transit. And we have to have parking for them. So anyway, that, those are my comments. And yes, on leases, I would like to know more.
Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the update presentation, all of the above, great information. I do have several comments, questions. First and foremost, I'd like to make sure that the other council members have an opportunity to weigh in that are not here today. So I think it's important that we hear from all of us and all the voices at the table. Definitely would love to hear more about land lease versus sale of property. Love to learn more about single-family homes paying for the services. I'm not sure what that means, but I'd love to learn more about that. As we talk about growth throughout our city, and I look at this map here, it's very striking that the city of Seattle has a bunch of purple and red, and the city of Bellevue has a bunch of purple and red, and then Kirkland and Redmond and Bothell have red. And then there's a black outline around the city of Bothell, but I don't see a black outline around the city of Bellevue, Kirkland, et cetera. So I'm just curious, what, what is the size of those other jurisdictions compared to Bothell? Obviously, we know the answer, that none of those jurisdictions span two counties. Bothell does span two counties. Definitely would love to learn more about the regional growth or countywide growth centers and how that can come into play with us being in two counties. I think that's an important item that we could, can make work if possible. Rezoning and, you know, understanding the rezoning and environmental impacts come to mind when we talk about, you know, adding a bunch of density and what, what impacts does that have on our environment? And how does that play out? Also, looking at communities that are on light rail versus BRT. A lot of those, like Linwood, have light rail going through them. So they may look a little different. You know, we obviously have 527 that's going to have transit now, and we were very successful in getting some grants there, and maybe some transit-oriented development can happen along that corridor. But what does that look like for the, for the rest of our community? And probably the single biggest thing that weighs on me that, that I think about often when I talk to folks in the community is why they came here, why they moved to Bothell. And they, they have all different reasons why they've come here. And so ensuring that we're looking at those different reasons, like some want single-family homes, some want to live, work, and play in the same community. I, I want and I hope that we can find a way to balance the way we move forward in the future, and have open conversations and dialogues to understand exactly why people come to Bothell and why they love to live here. So thank you again. Appreciate, look forward to learning more.
Thanks. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. I'm, the questions have been asked before, so I'm not going to reiterate. But there is something, one slide that really caught my attention also is if you go back a couple with the list of, yeah, this one. It's very interesting that Quadplex has the most value per acre, which may actually be something interesting to, to look at, because you don't have to go all apartments, because that gives you the volume, right? And then, or townhomes. But then you can do Quadplexes where you can have a balance between having massive buildings versus smaller buildings that fit in into the neighborhoods, you know, with the interesting designs. I thought that was a very interesting thing that can be explored as a compromise, you know, in, in more places than, than if we decide to do all apartments, for example, you know? So that's, that's the only thing that I think will be interesting to explore. Yeah, the stuff you hit on, you know, in downtown, we have Main Street, for example, we have Historic, and we don't touch that, because if you touch it, now you have to do the whole, the whole, the whole neighborhood. So what do you do there? How do we get a neighborhood that looks like Lower Maywood right here in our area? You know, there's a mix of housing here that gives it the cool character, but also fits a lot of people in there, and is close to transit, you know? So how do we get that balance back over here? That's all. Thank you.
I have a couple things. In terms of ways that we want this used, I would love to see this inform our ongoing land use decisions. Not just things that we're doing purely for financial motivations, but, you know, as we evaluate all of the pros and cons to something, if there's a financial piece to that, that's information that I'd like to know as well. The, I mean, we have multiple things at the Planning Commission right now that will absolutely have a financial piece to them. And just those kind of normal decisions we make on a Tuesday night, I'd like to know, you know, is this going to affect our financial viability? Next is to help financial viability of the, of the city moving forward through the comp plan. So strategically use land use as a way to make sure that we can help leave the next council's better budget processes than the ones that we've been having lately. And obviously, that's a, it's a big ship. It's going to take a little while to turn around, but I'd like to start laying the groundwork for something that can, that can live far beyond our time on the dais. I would also love staff recommendations in ways to edit our code to just find ways to increase financial value, even, you know, without, without rezoning. You know, in the presentation that Joe Menicozy did, there was a similar building in Kirkland to one in ours that had a significantly higher land value per acre. I'd love to know why. Like, what are the, what are the rules that make that so much different than ours? Red Barn Village, yeah, I mean, that's a no-brainer. It's going to be served by the Green Line. We've got federal and state investments coming in. I would absolutely love to leverage those investments in ways that can benefit Bothell financially as well as just provide more housing for people, because we need a lot more of it. And a yes on long-term land leases, I would love to know more. That is my list. Not a lot of questions, but feedback. I think that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, council conversations. Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you. I just had two things. One is so looking forward to the ribbon-cutting ceremony this week for the, the fields. So happy that development downtown helped to pay for those fields. So that is a win-win-win for our community. And the other is, I wanted to give a shout-out to Scott. I didn't have the opportunity to tell him. Thank you. But that presentation on the downtown cleanup was amazing. The information that came out of his mouth was just, it was an eye-opening experience to go through that with him. So to have somebody on our staff that, that has that knowledge and that information, that's priceless. So just wanted to give a big shout-out to him.
I like how we were all like, can we, can we guys put that on the website or something? Because we get asked this question all the time. And if there was just a way, we could be like, oh, yeah, go to bothlaw.gov/cleanup. It's all right there. And like, they could see a good presentation. We're like, that would be cool.
Can I say something? No, no, sorry, sorry, sorry. Yes, I saw on my calendar to go to the ribbon-cutting. Very excited for that. Partly because I want to touch the new turf. Just do appreciate it. Maybe jump up and down every few times. Yeah. But one thing that I would like to do is to thank our finance department, because when I first came on City Council, I was whining because I had constituents asking, could you spell out on the vouchers what the expenditures are? And that took a lot of whining on my part. And I know it was a hurdle, because I think, I think Jennifer was saying it had to be hand-entered. There wasn't an easy way to just say, code it. But boy, for transparency, it is huge. And so I wanted to say thank you for that. That means a lot to the community, and thank you for going through that effort.
It's awesome. Feels extra light today. You know, I don't know if it's because we're, you know, here, or because the others aren't here. So I don't know. Let's see.
All we have to do is cut out hour-long presentations and have like three empty seats up here, and things go pretty quick. I'll be there as well on Thursday, and I'm looking forward for that, too. I think we're probably ready to go. Councilmember McNeil's packing up up here. So I think, I think it's probably time to call it. Thanks, everyone.
Thanks. Good night.
Night.